Commissioner Anderson.
Also.
Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner, or Chair McCoy.
Here.
Commissioner Osik.
Here.
Commissioner Hoy. Absent. Commissioner Cook?
Here.
Vice Chair Lewis?
Here.
Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no additions or deletions to the agenda. Do we have any public comment? I see none. Does anybody here wish to address the Housing Authority? Okay. Vice Chair Lewis, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, I do. I move acceptance of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's moved by Vice Chair Lewis and seconded by Commissioner Kazer to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? Vice Chair Lewis?
I guess this will be the time to talk about the, there are three things in the consent calendar. One is the minutes from December 11th. Under action items, there's one, and that's the reappointment of Carl Kramer to the Housing, Salem Housing Advisory Committee. And under one resolution, it is to approve the service coordinator, case manager for Salem Housing Authority's homeless rental assistance program.
Okay. Questions or comments? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And we have an information report. Andy, is there anything you want to talk about in that report?
Not at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson.
Thanks. There's something I want to talk about, or actually, there's something I want to have Director Wilch talk about. Well, first, I want to say, it looks like you're really moving forward to see what we can do with the special 100 that we put an emphasis on, and so thank you for that. Their report looks, it's very encouraging start. My question is, it looks also, from what your discussion was, that there, so far, there has been no disruptive federal legislation, or nothing disruptive coming down from HUD. You're nodding yes. Do you anticipate that's going to continue?
I'm hoping so, sir.
Well, that's hope and anticipation are two different things.
I, we know a few things about our budget leading up to this next year, and so it looks like it could be okay. It's, but you never know. You know, we don't know how much money we have until the year is over, and then the HUD comes back and reconciles with us, so, but we're cautiously optimistic.
Great, thanks.
Great way to run a business, isn't it? Okay, anything else? Commissioner, Vice Chair Lewis?
Andy, a question about the capacity of your operation. Do you have the capacity to move on developing bare land if it happened to come to you at a reasonable or free price?
Yes.
And how?
Reasonable or free.
Pardon?
You said reasonable or free.
I did. How large is that capacity?
Well, so, we have some means to control land with SHA funds that we have luckily got it through some other development work, right? Development fees, right? But the state of Oregon is creating, and they had one eight years ago, they had a land bank kind of program, and they, for whatever reason, zeroed it out, but they're bringing that back. I just talked with the executive, Julie Cody, about that. It's not ready yet, but that's something that could easily become a good tool for us. So.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem adjourned.
Very nicely done. First meeting of the year, a very short one.
Call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency for January 8th to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Kazer.
Present.
Board Member Anderson.
Likewise.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member McCoy.
Yes.
Board Member Osik.
Here.
Board Member Hoy, absent. Board Member Lewis.
Here.
Pardon me, Board Member Cook.
Here.
And Chair Bennett.
Here. Okay. Councilor McCoy, are there any additions or deletions?
No, there's not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Public comment? There's no public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to address the Urban Renewal Agency? Okay, thank you. Councilor McCoy, the consent calendar.
Yes, sir. I move approval of the consent calendar with the following polls. 4.2A by Councilor Anderson, and 4.3A by Councilor Kazer.
Second.
4.3A. Don't be screwing with me.
Anybody else?
Need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? You want to go over any of that?
See, there is urban renewal financial report, and the other two items were pulled.
Okay, great, thank you. All those in favor of the motion, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We have information report?
The, we have in the packet this evening an information report on economic development activities.
Okay. Any questions on the information? Yes, Councilor Anderson.
I have to say that I and many other council members, Director Rutherford, went to that open house, and you and your staff should be commended for doing a terrific job and letting everybody have their say. And I appreciated the way you compiled everything, because I do have a few questions, so let's start with page three of your report. I'm looking at the bullet point that says input from all stations, and then down toward the bottom, there are, the last two bullet points are utilize alleys and prioritize pedestrian space, and in both of those, you noted that redesign of alleyways and reducing travel lanes are both out of the scope of this plan. Could you explain that, please?
Happy to.
I knew you would be.
Yeah, so, and just to clarify, we've got an economic development and this information report. I wasn't sure which one you were talking about this evening.
Oh, I'm curious, sorry.
So, okay, so on our streetscape information report, yes, in the scope of work for this project, we do have travel lanes outside of this process, because that's transportation system planning. So, the streetscape is what happens on the sidewalk when you look at plantings, furnishing, lighting, those sorts of things. So, a transportation system planning effort is a much larger, broader, citywide, comprehensive process, and is not the scope.
So.
The second part of your question was tied to the alleys.
Yeah.
And the reason that that is outside of the scope is because we already have projects that are underway within our alleys to look at trash enclosures, to look at lightings, to look at excavation.
So, the alleys are outside the scope because you are working on another program, and the traffic issue, I understand that is outside the scope because it really is more under the purview of Director Fernandez than you, but are sidewalks, do they come under streetscapes, or do they come under traffic?
Sidewalks are under streetscape, but we're partnering with Public Works on that, so we do have traffic engineers in our technical advisory group.
I'm sure you do, so I guess my question is, if you make some changes in sidewalk, doesn't that sort of necessarily lead to some potential changes in traffic?
Not as long as we stay outside of the right-of-way.
Okay, so, any changes that would be made in sidewalks, that would really only relate to maybe some parking, as opposed to actual traffic lanes?
That's right. We could widen sidewalks into parking spaces, as long as we're not impinging into the travel lanes.
And that would include something like the, I don't know what they're called, parking cutouts, where, yeah, where part of the sidewalk is wide, and there are a few cutouts where you can still do some actual car parking in that?
That's correct. So, we could expand sidewalks to allow for more outdoor dining space, or for more plantings and landscaping.
Those both sound like terrific ideas, and not only do I think they're terrific ideas, but certainly everybody who testified, that's the wrong word, everybody who contributed to the open house thinks they're very good ideas. I read all of these things, and what I see are street diet, more bike pads, greener stuff, access to riverfronts, alley, two-way streets. Those are the main sort of items that I pulled out, and I have to say, I didn't see anybody say, gee, wouldn't it be great if cars could move faster through downtown? So, I think that's the way the public wants us to go, too, and so I think at some point, as you're moving along in this street design plan, you're going to have to bring in the traffic issues. They may be outside the direct scope, but from what everybody asked for, and what, also from what negatively nobody wanted, I think, and I know this will happen, we're going to need some pretty good coordination on looking at all these issues. Thanks for your excellent report, and I look forward to more of them in the future.
Councilor McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kristin, how many people participated in this event, and how many opinions did you gather here? It looked like 40 or 50?
We had about 75 people that showed up at the event.
75 people. Well, I guess I would, responding to Councilor Anderson's point there, 75 people out of 160,000 does not make a consensus group from the citizenry. We have, maybe more outreach is needed. I don't disagree that we need to do something with the sidewalks and those kinds of things, but again, 75 people out of 160,000 is not something I think I'm ready to vote, yeah, that's what we need to do moving forward without a little more outreach and get a bigger number than that.
Councilor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Rutherford, I just had a question about temporary use of space, just to kind of build on what Councilor Anderson asked for. What are the rules around parklets and use of temporary space to kind of test pilot these ideas, as Councilor McCoy was saying that people might be a little concerned how they look on paper versus how they look in real life? Could you elaborate on that?
Yes, my understanding is that we do not have a policy in place around parklets, but that is something that we will be exploring through this process. We will be looking at doing these, you know, we could look at parklets, or, when I think parklet, I think landscaping, temporary landscaping out into a parking space, but there are also similar designs that are outdoor dining or seating area that encroach into parking spaces. So, that's something that we will be looking at as a part of this process, and where and which block faces, something like that might be appropriate to explore as a temporary measure. And then, we will also be looking at whether or not permanent improvements that could extend permanent landscaping into parking spaces may also be appropriate. And then, we'll have to look at the trade-offs between on-street parking and those other uses, which are often in competition with one another.
Thank you for the explanation, and just also, what is the data? I know with urban development, quite frequently, this all comes down to the economics issue. What is the data surrounding the use of parklets and its effect on the businesses surrounding those parklets and the economic benefit to those businesses? Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
I couldn't give you any specific data at this time, but I do know anecdotally from other communities that I've talked to that do allow parklets, that it does allow for more seating capacity for those businesses that do have access to that additional outdoor seating.
Thank you.
Councilor Lewis?
Thanks. I want to follow up on Member McCoy's point of 75 people participating. I would hope that you are planning additional outreach in different methods to get a wider response from the community.
We are seeking online input, and then we also have additional open houses that will be coming up later this spring, as well as outreach to neighborhood associations.
Thank you. Councilor McCoy.
Kristin, one of the things that came to mind here as I read that, there was a lot of, well, two things that were interesting. One, you were asking people what their favorite downtown, what some of their other favorite downtown areas would be, are, and it was from smaller cities to big, I mean, like Austin, Texas, and I'm not sure we compare to them, but I've been in that downtown, and it is pretty cool. I guess my question is, are we, are you going to like, look at that and then start looking at what these folks like, or have you already done that to bring back ideas and things to kick around with that committee, along those lines?
Yes, so this is going to be an iterative process over the spring, so with this first meeting, gathering broad-range input. So, we asked people, we had a bunch of pictures up on the wall from our own downtown, and asked people what they liked, and to dot what they liked about our downtown. Then, we also had images from other downtowns, and asked them to identify what they, what features they liked from other downtowns. I'd say, for most of these exercises, greenery was the thing that really jumped to the top that people really liked. We also gave people some maps to work with and identify what they saw as the heart of downtown, where they go when they come downtown, how they come into the downtown, so we could get an idea for the, you know, the street navigation experience, and the, what sort of wayfinding might be needed. So, we'll be taking that information, along with a walk-around exercise that occurred this afternoon with our streetscape work group and the design team. And from that information, they will come back with some concepts, and then they will take those concepts out and test those with other input groups through open houses, through charrettes. So, it will have this ongoing refinement process.
Mr. Mayor, one more question?
Go ahead.
I'll go to the streets, and maybe Mr. Fernandez is going to get involved in this one, but I know in some of those cities that I saw where they liked the downtown, they do have two-way streets, and it's not, you know, they've got slower traffic flow coming through the downtown than we do, with our one-way, both ways, and on Liberty and Commercial, which you got a bridge stuck there, which is amazing. Councilor Nanki is whispering in my ear here, which I understand, but is there any way that some of these one-way streets could go away as we look at this thing, or is that something that's just not on the table, given?
I will defer that one to Director Fernandez.
The traffic flow requirements that we have.
Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. So, we completed a downtown traffic circulation study a couple of years ago, and we looked at a number of traffic changes, and what we have said is, there's some workhorse streets in downtown, Liberty Commercial, Marion Center, Front Street, and after that, every street is open for two-waying, reducing, doing what everyone want to do. In fact, the city's already taken action. We took out a lane on High and Church Streets to put in the buffered bike lanes. So, there are other ideas that are underway, that are already in plans. We're working on two-waying State Street, we've already done a little piece of that. So, there's plenty of opportunities to do that. What we really can't do, what we can't afford from a traffic circulation standpoint, is impact the operation of the workhorses. And that's because on any given afternoon, traffic's already backed up to Owen Street on Liberty, so any reduction in lanes would just back us up further, that then begins to affect neighborhoods, for example, and the same way, same thing coming south, and the same thing heading east, or heading west, and we do have, we do have the bridge there. So, I think we're using the, I hear the terminology of speed, and I don't think we have speeding downtown, the signals just can't, won't support it, you know, you'll get caught at a signal. What we do have is a tremendous amount of volume downtown, and that doesn't change regardless of what you do to the flow of traffic. All it'll do is back up traffic further than what it is, so that's the balancer that we have to do with anything that we want to propose downtown.
I want to remind you all, we are going to have substantial work sessions, as well as council meetings on this, so you'll have a chance to, I'm not sure what this is all about now that we're going to ask all these questions, but go ahead, Councilor Cook.
Thank you, just one question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yeah, just one more.
Very short.
Let's get this wrapped up.
Thank you. Director Fernandez, if you could just speak to how adding the two-way on State, what the results have been with that, and what you've found?
Yeah, so for the, we made a change to State Street a few years ago, where we made a two-way from Front to Liberty. We did it in two phases, and there really has been no impact, that I'm aware of, to congestion or anything of the sort, so what it does is it creates for better circulation, better vehicular circulation around downtown, and I think we can probably do more of it. There's a cost, because, you know, every signal has to be reworked, and we have to add signals, because the signal system was all set up for one-way, so that's really the significant cost behind two-waying, but we've been on record that State, Court, High, Church, Cottage can all be two-wayed, and that's not, that's not a problem.
Councilor Anderson.
Just a very short definitional question, being a lawyer, I want to see the statutory definition of the word parklet. I can get it in context, but I'm not exactly sure what we meant by that, so perhaps you could tell us that. Thanks.
So, a parklet is a space consisting of usually one or two parking, on-street parking spaces, that are taken out of circulation for parking, for use as extended sidewalk or, I don't want to say like recreational space, there may be benches, there may be some greenery there.
Great, thanks.
Okay, so I'd like to add that we will be having a work session, I believe it's scheduled in June, to discuss this more, with more open houses throughout the spring and charrettes throughout the spring. And the reason that the two-waying of State Street and Court are not included in what we're looking at here is that work is also already underway.
Okay, great, thank you. Four-two-eight, Councilor Anderson, you have a motion?
Thank you, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Cook.
Thank you. I'm all for this, but I have to say, I was a little confused, but the way I read this is, we are going to condemn this, but there's nobody who gets any money from any condemnation?
That is correct. We have an unusual situation with this condemnation, where there is a piece of property that was not conveyed as a part of a prior transaction, prior conveyance of the adjacent property. And so, it's kind of left out there in title limbo, without an entity that actually owns it right now. The prior entity is no longer in business, and so we can't find anybody that's in actual ownership, so we need to condemn it out to clear the title.
So, we just do it, so it's a procedural, clear the title sort of thing, and there's going to be no money?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless somebody shows up and shows they own it.
Yeah, yeah, and says, it's mine. Yeah, 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 yeah. Everybody here is raising their hands, I can see that. One final question, and that is on the landscape improvement, there's talk about a rectangular, rapid-flashing beacon, so I suspect this goes to Director Fernandez. Am I correct in my recent understanding that our RFBs are no longer in favor with the federal people, and if so, how does that affect this, and what's going to happen?
Right, that's correct. I admire you for being in the know on the federal highway minutia.
I spend more time than I should on this stuff, Director.
So, Federal Highway Administration sent out guidance just a few weeks ago, that the rapid-flashing beacons is, in essence, what we have out here, crossing Commercial Street, or what you see on 12th Street, are no longer allowed under federal manual and uniform traffic control devices standards. We believe it has to do with a patent issue with the product. We await to see if those things can be resolved, and federal highway will allow it again. If it does not, we are not allowed to install any new ones, we can maintain the ones that we have. There are other ways to signalize pedestrian crossings that are viable in the MUTCD, so we would have to, when this project comes to fruition, if the rapid-flashing beacons are not allowed, then we'll have to figure another mechanism.
You'll find something that will hopefully have the same result.
Right.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Any further comment, questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Councilor Kazer, 4.3A.
Thank you, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by McCoy. Councilor?
Thanks. So, interesting property. Briefly, it looks like agency-acquired property in 2004, cleaned it up with DEQ funds, and then sold it in 2008 to a company, and the condition, one of the conditions, because it's in the urban renewal area, is that.
That's correct.
They had to design and build something by certain days, and they've kept asking for extensions. And my understanding of this has gone on for about 10 years. They've asked for extensions. And now, in the meantime, the property's been sold to another buyer, and they were, they were left with having to design and build, I think, by August 1st of this, or last year, and then construction completed by August 1st of this year, and now they're asking for an extension of that. Is that kind of generally?
That's correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what's going on there? And I guess the other piece of this is if we don't agree to the extension, that it reverts back to the agency at no cost to us?
We would end up taking the.
That the buyer is out there, whatever they spent to acquire the property?
Right, we would end up going through a process to take the property back, if they, if we don't extend it, and if they don't meet the conditions. It's a challenging to develop site, it's not a high-value site, it took some time to sell the first time around. We could take it back, but I think we would then have the same challenges moving forward if, to sell it and try to find somebody else with a use for that site.
And also, it sounds like they, the new owner has an idea of what they want to do with the space, they just need a bit more time than the year or whatever they've.
That's our understanding. They came in, they came in and acquired at the tail end of one of the prior extensions, and it, my understanding is that it is just a matter of time to get their own plans more solidified, their financing more solidified, and to go through our process.
Okay. In a way, I feel bad for them, because they took this on, and under the gun, I guess, but I'd hate to see this go on for another 10 years or more, but, yeah, all right, thank you.
What's on the site now?
It's, yeah, it's not developed right now.
Okay. Councilor Anderson?
Just one quick point, I'm looking at attachment three, and section 3.1 is modified. That's the agreement that we are authorizing you to enter into tonight if we vote in favor of this, is that correct?
Let me get to the right place here. We've got multiple amendments attached here.
That's the end of the staff report, the last two pages.
Yeah, so this would be the Fourth Amendment, correct?
Okay, and that's the one we're looking at now.
That's the one we're looking at tonight.
So, you know, I think it's pretty good when you say they have to build the following, you've put some pretty good strictures on this, it has to be a commercial building, retail building, residential building, or a combination thereof, and I think that's terrific, and, you know, I hope it works, and I hope that we can see something there on Portland Road. Thanks.
Councilor Nanki. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, having been here for its entirety. Yes, well, and I actually did environmental site assessment work in that neighborhood, and that piece of property is very, very challenging, and we were actually happy to have someone finally buy it. And each time, it's been happy to give them an extension on it, knowing, you know, how difficult a piece of property is, and the fact that we're working with the state agency as well makes it all the more interesting. So, yes, we should keep this moving out. We don't want it back. And then have to try to find someone else for it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Counsel, or the urban renewal agencies that you're...
He didn't even there as good as you did. Meeting time.
No. I took five minutes. What's your problem?
I'm going to cut McCoy off. Conversation, I'll tell you that right now.
I want to make sure I was shorted.
Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for January 8th to order. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Kaiser?
Present.
Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Present.
Counselor Osick?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay, our first order of business is election of officers. Counselor Anderson?
Need that mobile mic.
I nominate Counselor Hoy for council president. Counselor Hoy, boy, Counselor McCoy! I'm sorry.
It's your script.
Yeah. I'm looking right at him. I accept. I apologize to Counselor McCoy, and I'm not sure I want to apologize to Counselor Hoy.
Or Hoy.
Yes. I nominate Counselor McCoy to council president.
Second.
Very good. Any further nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Counselor McCoy continuing his term as council president, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nope, I'm not opposed, but I'm wondering if, like, the Congress, I can make changes to the congressional records, so I don't know what's going to show up here, but I made the motion for McCoy.
We'll make sure it's fixed.
You owe me now, Tom.
Okay, Counselor McCoy, you will do another year as council president. Okay? So why don't we let you do your first approval of additions and deletions of the year?
I move approval additions to the agenda. Not approve, that addition is the election.
Counselor Osick, second, okay.
And the addition is election of council president.
That's it. Well, that was done very well. Good, we're done with that one then. Okay, counsel or city manager comments? Any counselors with comments? Counselor Kaiser?
Thank you. I had the privilege on New Year's Eve of going to the Gilbert House down at Riverfront Park and participating in Noon Year's Eve, which is a balloon drop they do at noon on New Year's Eve for the little ones. And I got to lead the countdown to that, so we counted down from about 15, and I think I was the second off, but it was great. Alicia Bay is the executive director there. She said there were over 1,000 people that turned out for the balloon drop, so I told her she needs more balloons for next year, but it was a great event. I also, really quick, want to give a quick status update on the Downtown Homelessness Task Force that I'm chairing, just to let everyone know that I've been working with Kristen Rutherford on putting together, and the mayor, putting together a list of folks to be on that task force, and we're hoping to hold our first meeting sometime in February, once we get everyone appointed.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCoy?
Well, it's been a while since we met, so I went through the holiday seasons, and I know Counselor Anderson, Counselor Nanki, and myself, and Counselor Hoy all attended the lighting of the Hanukkah, one of the nights, the fifth or sixth night of the event, which was great fun. It was a joyous, happy event with, we all got glow-in-the-dark dreidel glasses to help celebrate that event, but it was great fun. I'd highly recommend it, but I got my two daughters and a granddaughter down there, too. They had a great time, and it's just a really wonderful, fun way to add something to the holiday season.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that was a great event. I followed that up with Christmas morning from 3:00 a.m. to 7:30 at the Warming Center, which if no one has worked that, is a very eye-opening experience, and I would encourage council to do that. That's the third shift where you wake them up at 5:30 and put them back on the street by 6:30, which was surprising as well. And then worked at the Smolka Place for lunch, serving meals through Union Gospel Mission's Women's Shelter.
Great. Thank you for doing that.
There's a homeless count coming up on January 31st as well. If people, there's still time to sign up for that as well. I'll be up in the canyon somewhere, I think around Gates.
I am not the homeless person. Who else we got? Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. The city manager?
Just a reminder, next week's work session is on Tuesday. City Hall will be closed Monday in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. The work session will be at 6:00 on Tuesday for a council discussion of your policy agenda for this year.
Okay, thank you very much. I have one proclamation. I'd like to, I'd like to invite up Benny Williams, Reginald Hendricks, Pastor Marilyn Williams, and Michael Chenault, who are officers of the Salem Kaiser Branch, the 1166 of the NAACP. Whereas January 15th, 2018, is celebrated nationally by the city of, and by the city of Salem, as the observance of the birthday of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Dr. King is recognized as a leader in the movement to establish civil and human rights for all people, and whereas Dr. King focused on building peaceful communities based upon equality and justice, and whereas the city of Salem has reaffirmed the personal liberties of its residents and does not tolerate any violation of their civil and human rights, and whereas the celebration of the life of Dr. King helps honor those who contributed to Salem's diverse history and culture, and whereas the recognition and study of Dr. King's life and work helps assure a rich and diverse community future. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the day of January 15th, 2018, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., day of recognition, and urge all residents to reflect and learn about his life's work so that the community will continue to uphold and respect the civil and human rights of every individual dated this eighth day of January 2018. So thank you very much. You bet.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, city manager Steve Powers, and to the city council. You know, this moment is a recognition of a universality belief of the importance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s life. As we stand here, sit here, but as my office stands here with me, Michael Chenault, who was announced, is not here tonight. He's the treasurer. Pastor Marilyn Williams is the secretary, and Reg Hendricks is the vice president of the Salem Kaiser NAACP. You know, I want to share with us, if I can take just a few minutes, Mayor. There's 10 national holidays that this country recognizes. Only three are named after an individual. Christmas Day is a representation of recognition of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, George Washington's birthday, and then Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Not only is he in great company, let's understand the significance of his being recognized with a national holiday. You know, all of us in this room, young and old, the older ones, we actually were around when he was, when he lived. Some of our younger people that's in the audience only know of him through their parents and through school. But the fact of the matter is, the significance of his life matters more today, or as much, let me put it this way, as much as it did when he lived, because we are in some troubling times right now. And these times are a reflection of the very things that his life was all about, and that is finding a way for us to love one another, respect one another, and help one another. And to a large extent, coming from the highest office in the land, that those prerequisites, if you will, or those desires, or those very basic principles are being questioned, are being denied, and it's causing all kinds of confusion. I thank the mayor here for this proclamation because it's not just words. I would encourage all of us here tonight to truly understand that we live in a place and in a time where, come this Monday, Dr. Martin Luther King, had he lived, would have been 89 years old. But the year 2018 marks the 50th year since he was assassinated and taken away from us. So minus that, you understand that he was 39 years old when he left us. But he accomplished, so much so, that tonight, we recognize him in the proclamation. But think about this. In 1983, this national holiday came into existence. It came into existence with the sitting president at that time, Ronald Reagan, signing it into law. Let's understand how that came about, though. We had a Congress who was able to show bipartisanship, a working relationship, to bring his name into legislation and put it before the President of the United States and say, "He deserves a national holiday." And President Reagan, whether he wanted to or not, was compelled to sign it into law. And I use his name right now only to say that we've got a president who exists right now using the very essence of Ronald Reagan as a basis for talking about, "Let's make America great again." And when in reality, we're turning back the hands of time, or he's attempting to turn back the hands of time. And I'm on a little bit of a soapbox here, but let me just conclude by saying this. The NAACP, the Salem Coalition of Churches, is sponsoring a rally this Monday. I've got some flyers that I'd certainly like to hand out and leave with all of us and ask you to join us, to join us at McKay High School, to have a complete reflection of the broadness, the expansiveness of this community in ethnicities, in nationalities, in age, and across all of the spectrums, of how we understand the importance, not simply of Dr. King, but of what he stood for and how important it is today for us to come back together and appreciate his life. His life, we recognize. Our lives, we're living. We have an opportunity of showing united the importance of what cooperation, mutuality means. We don't have to agree on everything. We just simply don't have to hate each other. So I want to encourage us, I'm going to, you know, again, we've got these flyers. We're expecting a big turnout. We've had two years running a march on Dr. King's birthday, trying to bring our community together, Salem Kaiser and the surrounding areas. We're expecting this march to be even bigger, but it's going to be bigger only to the extent that all of us recognize the importance of it. And so I invite you all to come out. I'd like to have my pastor and secretary of the NAACP to speak on the church service that we're going to have in advance of that. I'm not sure if I'm on you, but hopefully you heard me.
On Sunday at 3:30 p.m., which is January 14th, at Seed of Faith Church, we will have a special Dr. Martin Luther King memorial service, and it's open to the public. It's open to everyone. Please come out and join us at that time, and it's at 3:30 p.m. at Seed of Faith Church, located on Market and Winter Street.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll now go to public comment. Thomas Ellis. And I would just remind, I'll be calling on several people to speak. You have three minutes. At two minutes, the yellow light goes on. That means you have one minute. And when the red light comes on, just stop talking. Keep going from there. Mr. Ellis?
Okay. My name is Thomas Ellis. I am a recent arrival in Salem, my wife and I having moved here in September after I retired from Hampton, Virginia. And so we're just sort of getting into civic life here. And I'm here this evening, I hoped to turn this thing on, but I turned it off so it wouldn't, the phone wouldn't go on, so I don't have anything to read from at the moment. I'm going to have to wing it for three minutes. But I am referring specifically to item 3.3D, that's 17641, which is the policy statement for the 2018 Oregon Legislative Session. And I read through this, I looked it up on my computer, and I didn't have any problem with anything you put in there. I thought they were all good policy recommendations, but there was one yawning gap, one thing that I wanted to see that I didn't see, and I would like to suggest that perhaps you might want to add it to this policy statement. And that is, there was no, there was no mention or endorsement of the proposed Clean Energy Jobs Act that the state legislature is due to act on in the next session. The Clean Energy Jobs Act, the whole idea here is to set a ceiling, set a limit on carbon emissions in Oregon that, and this, it's been written in such a way that this limit would generate revenue to support both research and development of clean energy alternatives to petroleum. And this, so it's a win-win on every level. It's, you're simultaneously, you know, benefiting the planet, helping ensure the future of the planet, at the same time providing jobs for Oregonians. This is a very worthy piece of legislation, and I think, to pick up on the previous speaker's point, it is really time for all of us to take a firm stand in support of, in this case, scientific reality, and acknowledge that climate change is everybody's business. So I strongly encourage you to include this in your recommendations for the state legislature. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay? Michael Slater?
Good evening, Mayor Bennett. Council members, members of staff. My name's Michael Slater. I'm here ostensibly to talk about 6.5. In reality, what I want to talk about is the tree preservation plans that go along with planned urban unit developments. The city's policy is that 25% of trees in a development that is 20,000 square feet or greater, 25% are required to be saved in the development of an area. Unfortunately, the city has some challenges, both assessing, monitoring, and enforcing the compliance with our tree preservation plans. I think there are four problems that we have. One is a very technical issue, is that the city, the tree conservation plan represents trees on the drawing as single points. They don't show the tree with a canopy. I think we all are aware that when you put in roads and you slice into a tree canopy, you're going to damage and perhaps kill the tree. But the planning staff is not able to look at the representation of trees on their drawings. They're just looking at points, so they can't determine if roads and buildings and structures are actually impinging on the tree canopy. Secondly, the tree canopy comes, the tree protection plan comes in at a different time than the grading plan, so the staff can't determine if any sort of later grading or topography changes are going to affect the tree preservation plan. Third, the planning department does not have the staff that are qualified to assess trees in the tree preservation plans. They don't have an arborist or a natural resource officer assigned to that department. assigned to that department. So they're really unable to look at that and make a determination if the tree preservation plan is correct. They can't go out into the field and examine it or make any determinations. And finally, the ordinance itself is not distinguishing between valuable trees, such as older, mature trees, and younger trees, or even scrub trees that may not be especially valuable. I think as we do an increasing amount of infill development in the city, where we're looking at taking out dozens, if not hundreds, of trees, we need to make sure that our tree preservation plan works as it is promised to work. It was the result of kind of a great deal of political negotiation years ago to allow infill development, development to go forward while still protecting some amount of our established tree canopy. I hope the council can look at this. We've had a number of good developments in terms of our urban forest and making some efforts to improve that. And I think it's time that we turn our attention to the tree preservation plans. Thank you.
Okay, just a moment. If we have any questions.
Just to clarify for council, he was speaking to item 6F, which is a land use decision that's on your agenda as an information report. To the extent that this is active party contact, we're going to include it into the record. So if it does come before you for a subsequent decision, it'll be part of the record.
Next time, let's make sure we talk about what we're going to talk about, okay?
Thought I did. I apologize.
Yeah, I know the game.
I'm not speaking to any specific agenda item. Are you sure you need me to go now?
Go ahead.
All righty. My name's Chris Wilhelm. I live at 2487 Ian Avenue Northwest. I come before you as the secretary of the West Salem Neighborhood Association. The West Salem Neighborhood Association's Land Use Committee has noticed a disturbing trend regarding staff reports on land use applications for comprehensive map changes, zoning changes, and site plan reviews. Specifically, interpretation and discussion surrounding the Transportation Systems Planning Rule, OAR 6601260, seems to highlight a misunderstanding and is causing conflict. Additional misunderstanding or differences of opinion regarding criterion and statewide planning goal 12, transportation, help further confuse and frustrate the WSNA Board and Land Use Committee. Evidence of disagreement is present in current land use actions, such as a site plan review appeal for the 500 block of Green Creek Road. More evidence is present as testimony is provided at the January 2nd Planning Commission public hearing regarding the comprehensive plan change for the 1200 block of Riverbend Road. The situation is deteriorating and unfortunately is delaying developers' applications from moving through the land use processes in a timely and orderly manner. Developers are being held hostage over transportation system concerns that frankly have very little to do with their land use actions. As it stands, each and every period for comment or opportunity for appeal will receive the same rhetoric from the association that we do not believe the city staff has completely and correctly accounted for the traffic impacts of proposed developments. Therefore, the West Salem Neighborhood Association and its Land Use Committee requests to hold a meeting where the public works, traffic engineers, city planners, a deputy city attorney, and the West Salem Neighborhood Association can discuss current processes and procedures taken by staff when considering applications with regard to statewide planning goal 12 and Transportation Systems Planning Rule, OAR 6601260. Specifically, we wish for common understanding and agreement on interpretation and application of the rule. We would like staff reports to include more language and detail substantiating that the evaluation work has been done according to that common understanding and that applications do meet the provisions. It's our intent to resolve these disagreements and misunderstandings in an amicable and productive way. Please help us resolve this conflict at the lowest level and avoid unnecessary escalation.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Wilhelm. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. Hi, everybody. Hope you all had a good holiday. Thanks again for...
A little closer?
Thanks again for having and listening to us today. Oh, I'm Jan Kaidas. I live at 3797 June Avenue Northeast. And first of all, I do want to thank for all those, there has been improvement at 2275 Coral Street Northeast. They have cleaned up the garbage in the front, the back. They've mowed twice. It's not quite as busy. The metal shed is still there and people still go in it. Yes, they do. And so, you know, we would, my husband still checks it every day, every day. And as for our protection, these are not safe people. No, they're not. But anyway, we thank you for what's been done so far. And please continue. Please continue. And then we'd like to know what we can do or who we go to to discuss the no parking signs on Coral. It has gotten really bad. The last, it kind of slowed down for a little bit, but the last two weeks, it's gotten worse, where there's people that just park and stay there. The other day, we had a 30-foot motorhome pulled right across the street. Coral isn't big enough for a 30-foot motorhome. And I do have a picture on my cell phone. Two semis right behind each other were parking in the same place. And that's not the first time. That's been many times. So, you know, we really, really need to have some no parking signs. None of us can believe there has not been an accident or something bad happened. And a lot of these people that are camping are, you know, they leave their garbage, their waste material. And my husband, especially the last couple of weeks, has found needles and in our yard. You know, there's a lot of kids there that walk up and down, people, pets. Somebody is going to get hurt or even die because we all know those things aren't safe. I was in the medical field, and they're not good. And then the other one is the house on the corner of June and Vaughn. The police know that one really well. Yes, they do. There's a lot of drugs, prostitution, a lot of things going on, and a lot of needles. There's people that, yesterday morning, we actually saw two people that came from there with two carts full of garbage, full of garbage, pushed it behind, there's a Mexican meat market there, right to their back door, and then went back to the house. This isn't the first time. I mean, 95% of the people that seem to walk by there go to that house. And I know I'm being conservative. I don't know what to tell you. It's getting worse. It's getting scary. We're almost afraid to leave our house. They work on the cars across the street there on Coral, and there's two or three of them. And they're, while one's working on the car, the other are just looking at the house, the garden, the next house.
Jan.
They're Casey.
Got the message. Thank you very much, Jan. The Public Works Director will give you his card to work on those no parking. And I know Counselor Hoy was taking notes, so we'll have follow-up on your issue on the other house. Thank you. Gary, would you like to?
Yes, my name is Gary Kaidas. Thank you, Mayor and council members. That's my wife that just spoke. What she's talking about is from the corner of June, about a block north. The street is real narrow there. Motorhomes parked there, cars parked there. People sleep in them there. I've had a city, years ago, I had a city guy came. He sat in the van on the side of the street, had me read the speeds of vehicles coming. Then he almost jumped in my lap, and I said, "What's going on?" He said, "That car almost tore my mirror off." He says, "This street's too narrow to have cars parked on it." And I said, "Yes, it is. That's why I've got you here." He said, "Well, I don't know what, you know, nothing was ever done. Something needs to be done about that." My wife talked about the house on Vaughn and June. What a disaster area. It's been like that for years. Supposedly, it's supposedly getting cleaned up. Nothing's being done. I mean, they pulled a trailer into Bay Mart full of garbage. I went over and told them at Bay Mart where it came from. They had them move it. Two weeks later, they bring them back, take the wheels off of it. And Bay Mart has to deal with it. I called them, said, "Please do something about this." They had called the police, called the code enforcement. So then one night, I see a trailer house coming from there. They go through the Bay Mart parking lot down the street. They come back. I look out and they're undoing it right beside my house, a trailer house full of garbage. I went out there, I said, "You can't leave that vehicle here. Well, we need to go get a bigger vehicle to tow it." I says, "You don't need a bigger. My little Nissan could pull that trailer." So they hooked onto it, pulled off. Then I tried to get their license number. They had it hit up under the grill. They pulled down the street and left that trailer on Beverly and Fisher. Pulled up in a lot and just left it there. The city of Salem paid to have that moved. That shouldn't be done. The city of people of Salem shouldn't be paying for private people's garbage to be hauled off. We've, you and I have talked about this. You know, something needs to be done. The police know about it. Why isn't something done with that house? I would like your comments on that.
When it comes to any of these structures that we're working with, we have to go through our standard due process in order to make sure that we follow all the rules and protections that are afforded to the property owner and thus create the proper administration of the law. So these things do take time when it comes to those buildings where that garbage may be stored. We can't deal with what is in the interior of those structures and the exteriors. We can deal with them the best we can within the limits of the law.
What about our rights? I mean, everybody that goes by that place.
I'm going to, I'm going to put a stop to questioning. Do you, go ahead, and you can ask me, and I'll ask him. How's that? We'll do it that way.
I'm just saying what happens to our rights.
I hear your, I think we all hear your problem. We know, Gary, the problem you've got out there. We're just, I think what the director's saying is we're stuck with the law that protects both you and that other guy. And what's so misunderstood, the other guy's got those protections too, and we're trying to work our way through them. So when we enforce, it sticks, and he can't get out from under it. But we're working on it, and as Jan said, it's improving, and it's just so frustrating that it's so slow. And I am sorry. I really am. But we will stay on top of this until it gets cleaned up. And I know Counselor Hoy is not letting anyone off the hook on this thing. Counselor Hoy, you want to tell him how much you're...
I would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate you coming down here and holding us accountable on this issue. I think it's really important. I had a robust conversation on Wednesday night at the NOLA neighborhood with Nelson Morales, the code compliance officer for that area. He is keenly aware of the issues. I talked to him specifically about the parking. I know he's keeping a very close eye on it. And like the mayor said and staff said, we are working on these issues. And I know it's frustrating as the people who live there. But we are working on it, and we are not going to stop working on it until we can get some real resolution here. So I thank you for coming back down, and I just ask for your continued patience.
Okay. And keep coming back, Gary. Don't stop coming. We're getting the like you guys. Well, just keep, just keep thinking those positive thoughts.
Yes, my name is Michael Hunter, and I'm just here to actually introduce myself. I'm one of the Republican candidates running for House District 19 representative, in which Marion County has a lot of involved there. And I do want to appreciate, one of your council members did attend our precinct committee people when we were trying to pick the appointment to replace Jody Hack, who resigned. I would appreciate you being there. It shows your interest in your citizens here. Just want everybody to know that I will be running, and I'm available if anybody ever wants to ask what I stand for and stuff. I just want to simply introduce myself, and I'm interested in making Marion County better.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any questions? Nobody's going to ask him why?
When you talk political questions, you don't get three months.
I know the question you need is why.
That would mean we might have to ask ourselves why.
Yeah, exactly. Well, Mr. Hunter, congratulations on being a candidate for state office. Thank you very much for coming down. Okay, that's all I have signed up. Anyone else want to speak to the council? Consent calendar, Counselor?
I move approval of the consent calendar with the following polls. 3.2B by Counselor Anderson. 3.3C by Counselor Anderson. And 3.3D by Counselor Lewis.
Very good. What else you got?
So, we've got the minutes from the December 4th and December 11th council meetings. We've got a resolution that's going to initiate a Class 2 vacation of the alley at the site of the new police facility. We've got adopting a resolution to establish yearly application and inspection fees for the city's property tax exemption program for nonprofit low-income housing. We've got ratification of an ambulance service area franchise agreement between Salem and Marion County, renewing the city's exclusive right and responsibility to provide ambulance services to Marion, in Marion County from January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2023. We've got the appointment of Ron Hayes to the Salem Urban Development Community Services and Housing Commission. And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We have no public hearings. So, special orders of business, Counselor Anderson. You have the first poll.
Yes. I move the staff recommendation on item 3.2B.
Second by Hoy. Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
I pulled this and 3.3C because both of them either directly or indirectly concern system development charges. I have been the chair of the System Development Charge Committee, of which Counselor McCoy is also a member, and Counselor Lewis has shown up. And we have been meeting, I would say, six or eight times. And I anticipate we might be meeting about that number additional times because this is a very complex, convoluted subject. And so I just thought it would be good to bring this fact to the attention of the rest of the council and of the citizens that this sort of review is going on. And at some point in the future, we will be coming in with some recommendations and maybe even a work session. So I ask either Director Fernandez or Glenn Davis, who is the staff person who's been doing a very good job shepherding us through this, if they could just speak briefly as to just what is a system development charge and how does it apply here?
Glenn Davis, Chief Development Engineer with Public Works. Yes, we've been meeting since June. We've had monthly meetings since then. The committee is comprised of the two counselors, a planning commissioner, SBRAB member, Sam Parks Recreation Advisory Board member, and a couple of development people, things like that. So a pretty good, broad group of people. And the idea of systems development charges is that we have the growth needs that infrastructure pays for. And so the systems development charges are a way to incrementally collect fees from growth projects to then pay for the infrastructure needed to serve that growth. And the way I like to explain it to the committee is it's a simple math problem. It's growth costs divided by growth units is equal to cost per unit of growth. And that's SDCs in its simple form. Once you move past that simple equation, it gets a little more complicated. So that's been a lot of, a lot of discussion and training and things like that as we've gone on. It's been very productive. Staff right now is analyzing all the data, and that analysis is scheduled to be done here in February, hopefully. And then we'll start talking about some actual, real conclusions that we're approaching. So that's a brief.
Thank you. If I may add to that, the proposal we're looking at now is amending the water system development charges eligible project lists. And that's one of the things, there's something called the 309 list, where various items have to be on that list before we can charge SDCs and before we can move forward. And so that's what this is actually doing. We're trying to amend the water system development eligible projects right now so in certain areas, developments can continue. Did I explain that right?
Yes.
Good. You've been teaching us well.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Any other questions? I would, might say, if it was that simple, we wouldn't have had six months of meeting and another six months coming. Trust me. Our standard joke is we look at the agenda and Glenn goes, "Well, this'll only take 15 minutes." And 40 minutes later, we're still asking him questions and we're hopelessly behind. Anything, anything else here? Any other questions? No? Thank you, Glenn. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to approve 3.2B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Anderson?
I move the staff recommendation on item 3.3C.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Hoy to approve 3.3C. To your motion.
Everything I said about 3.2B applies here too. In fact, it applies even more because this is the actual one with the water project. Specifically, there's various levels of service depending on how low, high or low you are and then depending on what reservoir there is and then how much is already allocated for use in each reservoir and then what might have to happen if a new reservoir is built in the area and how we can take volume from one reservoir and pay it out to, in anticipation of there's going to be another one built sometime down the line.
Or we get more pressure and put in a pressure.
Right, right. All sorts of stuff and I think we should pass this one too.
He's just showing off now, folks. Okay, any other questions here? Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to approve 3.3C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Lewis, 3.3D.
Well, I've got two choices. One, to defer my comments to Counselor Anderson because on our desk tonight, there was a, what I'll call an amendment to this. The other option is for me, is for me to move staff recommendation with the addition of the language that was submitted by Counselor Anderson. I do that.
Can you make the question?
We have an option.
Okay.
So, just if I can restate the motion, it was a staff recommendation in the addition of establishing ongoing comprehensive and robust program partnerships and commitment to the support reduction of greenhouse gas emissions in our community.
That's the motion.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Cook. Okay, there you go. You gotta get louder here. To approve 3.3D with the aforementioned amendment? To your motion?
Real shortly, I can appreciate the additional language and that's why I made the motion and I'll vote for it. I am hesitant. We've all received emails about the Clean Energy Jobs Act and I'm not there with that specific item. But this motion now does not include that and therefore I support it.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you and thank you, Counselor Lewis, for your comments. This is clear that this language is taken almost verbatim from our strategic plan, which says, "An ongoing, comprehensive, and robust program partnership and commitment to support reduction of greenhouse gas emissions in our community and energy conservation in city facilities and operations." So, that's why I think it's got the support of Counselor Lewis and hopefully others. I would like to say a little bit about the Clean Energy Act and we heard Professor Ellis talk about this and I think we got another email from someone. I think that is something that needs to be discussed, but I agree with Counselor Lewis, not now. We have a legislative subcommittee that meets to discuss these things. And that's the way process should go. Anything should come from the legislative subcommittee and then up to the city. So, I know we have a meeting coming up, I think in February, and I'm looking at Deputy City Manager Duncan and asking if we could have at least some information and potential discussion of the Clean Energy Act at that subcommittee meeting.
Yes, we can add that to the agenda and bring what information is available.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just, still not, still not over that. Laws to bite that much. So, I was not here, I was not on council when this policy document was developed, but I would just like to remind the members of the committee as we go forward with legislative topics that we now have a strategic plan. And that, I think that really needs to be our guiding document as we consider legislation. And I would encourage staff to sort of have the strategic plan in one hand as they're reviewing potential legislation as a guide. So, I appreciate this document as well, but I think the strategic plan really needs to be our overriding principles since those are all agreed upon and with input from the community and so, anyway, that's why I just wanted to put that out there.
Well said.
Okay.
Great. Thanks for your comments. Counselor Kizer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm on the legislative subcommittee, I think as an alternate, but I don't think I'm going to make the next meeting, but I wanted to, if the committee can consider this legislative session, getting the city of Salem exempted from the state law that prohibits photo radar enforced speed signs, would really like the city to try to get that tool added to our toolbox so we can add that on to the list to look at as well.
That has been a topic of discussion with our preliminary discussions with our new lobbyists, so we are on that.
Yeah. In fact, I think we'll have some meetings scheduled trying to get a bill in or some sort of vehicle in to get that taken care of. Okay? Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a tough one, knowing this is in our strategic plan as well, but if one reads it comprehensively, that could say, "We're not going to let any big energy users in who may happen to have really high-paying jobs as well." And that's concerning to me. And I'd like to actually just discuss some of that more because if we're going to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in our community comprehensively, that means, will we let companies who actually emit significant quantities into the community? And I'm looking at, you know, talk about clean energies, like solar panels are really clean energy after they're made. Making them is massively energy-intensive, as is semiconductor-type facilities. And we're seeing, I think, the last of those leave the area now over the last couple of decades. And I think even with the larger package that the state government is looking at, it could result in net job loss. So, I'm going to vote in opposition on this motion.
So, Counselor, just so I understand, you believe this would override state land use planning law?
No. I'm just saying as a, as a policy statement from us, I don't agree with how that wording is. And I, and I had reservations as we put it and agreed to it on that last meeting on the strategic plan as well and I should have spoke up at that time.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. And I can appreciate Counselor Manki's concerns if you look at individual things, but that's why I think the word comprehensive is in there because comprehensive means looking at more than the individual project that is in front of you. So, in fact, to use this example, let's say a solar energy panel business comes in and wants to build and let's say that is going to produce a lot of greenhouse gas emissions in the building of that, but looking at it comprehensively, the products that they produce are going to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, that's what I think, why the word comprehensive is in there. And I think everything's going to be looked at across the board rather than just what is this individual project? It's going to be, how does it fit in?
Counselor, do you think it'd be reasonable? I'm just, I'm just curious because this is our first look at this, that we take a look at this at our next meeting? Just give everybody a chance to think about it or would you rather go ahead? Either way's fine with me, but I, I think one of the things would be to get a look at the bill that's, I assume this is targeting a bill we've not seen.
No.
It isn't? Okay.
Yeah, so that's why the Clean Energy Act or any other bills, those are for the legislative committee. This is a statement of principle and it's taken almost word for word from what we already passed.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, no, it's not directed at any specific bill. That's the job of the legislative subcommittee.
So, this just goes in as what? Just, we feel, we feel good about not doing gas?
In my view, it should go in the environmental section. That's the very last one of the, of the plan and it just would be an additional bullet point.
For guidance to the legislative committee?
Yeah, and the staff, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I agree. The wording that we're looking at this evening does have flexibility in it. It does allow us to make decisions based on reality, unlike the Clean Energy Jobs Act, which is very specific, very punitive, and, and no flexibility whatsoever. And so, this is, I think, an appropriate statement, especially since it mirrors the strategic plan, but it doesn't take away our ability to govern.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Everybody ready? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes. Information reports. Y'all had a chance to look at these? Any questions? Counselor McCoy?
Somebody could explain to me the urban renewal agency financial reports? I don't really know what I'm looking at there. That little required report?
Innocent attorney?
No, it's like.
Give 30 seconds.
It's this little, little table. I still read it and I look at the chart and I look at that thing and it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, I mean, I looked at one, it says, "Received tax, well, debt service expenditure, the actual for this year was 9.7 million, the budget's 23.9 for the next year. Why is there such a big leap?"
Could you use your microphone just so, just thought we'd share it with the rest of humanity that this is pretty enlightening stuff you're doing.
Yeah. For, I want to, I just want to know, debt issuance, 5.7, and then the budget for this year is 23.2. And there's big discrepancies here. Improvement expenditure, 6.6 this year, 48 million in the next year. So, I'd just like to make sure I understand what you're saying.
I actually do understand that because I spoke, wait a minute, wait a minute. I spoke with Casey Duncan this afternoon about the same issue because I had the same question. So, this man is well rehearsed to answer those questions.
Go ahead, Casey.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, for preparing me. So, what you're looking at is, there are two separate things, I guess, to bring to mind. One is, one shows you actual numbers in the far-right column, it's showing budgeted. And you'll see that we've appropriated all funds where it shows a fund balance in the budget of zero, knowing that at the end of the year, there are projects that will be completed and there will be a fund balance and carryover. So, that, that's part of it. But what you also may not see there is projects budgeted within the North Gate Urban Renewal Area. And we are issuing debts to begin a lot of those projects in this fiscal year. Thus, the big increase from one year to another. Keep in mind that under state law, these projects can only occur when you have a debt instrument. So, we have to issue the debt before we can move forward on the projects. So, that's what you see there and that's part of the disparity that you see, a combination of both appropriation authority and additional expenditures in the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area.
Thank you.
That took care of it, okay? Okay, any other question? Yes, Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have some questions in regards to item 6F. We had some testimony this evening in my ward in relation to tree preservation and residential infill. I was just wondering if you could speak to the four points that were brought up by the testimony this evening?
Yes, Counselor Cook. Those four points included a number of items such as a lack of a tree canopy that is included, a tree survey, the need for a sequence, a better sequence between the tree protection plan being considered at the time of a grading permit, the lack of a certified arborist for our staff, as well as the fact that the tree ordinance does not currently create distinctions or distinguish between, say, what would be considered heritage trees, high-value trees versus trees that are perhaps invasive or certainly not native to the area. Those are very good points. I can't verify the details of how accurate those findings are compared to the current ordinance. I don't know the ordinance off the top of my head. And so, for further detail into the ordinance itself, as, as it relates to those points, I would have to rely on our Deputy Director Lisa Anderson-Ogilvy to speak more to that. But just for the sake of the overall review of these four points, these are very important aspects of what would be in any really effective tree ordinance. And so, if these things are lacking, I do think that it is a very important area for improvement in order to make sure that we best manage our tree canopy, especially where there is infill. So, these are very important aspects of any very effective ordinance. With that being said, again, for further detail, I would defer to Lisa.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Slater and I have talked about the tree preservation ordinance and he's correct. It does not require them to show the canopy of the trees. It does not distinguish between the type of trees you're preserving, except for Oregon white oaks or trees near creeks or streams. We do not have an arborist or anyone with any sort of tree background in the planning division. We rely on public works staff if that's needed. However, the tree conservation plans that are required for subdivisions just require that you save 25% of the trees. So, there's not necessarily a lot of, you know, field work we need to do. We don't need to look at necessarily the health of a tree because that's not a criterion for approving the plans. And we also do not receive grading plans when we're doing tentative land divisions. That's something that happens later with engineering. So, we can't really make a determination how the grading is going to affect the trees that are preserved besides just seeing that it's kind of a steep site and they might be cutting for a street next to it.
Thank you.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you. Just to clarify, we have a complaint-driven process as far as code compliance is concerned when there is, I want to say, a violation or when there's a code issue where someone's cut down a tree that was specified as protected. And we do have an arborist on staff within the city, just not in your department. Is there something that you can, how, how cost-effective would it be to work within the city and these different departments to make sure that the arborist that's helping to issue code compliance or to help with that complaint-driven process can be included in the planning process? Would that be a big undertaking as far as cost or workload or how would that, has that been discussed? And thank you for the work.
Sure. So, trees that are supposed to be protected through a tree conservation plan, we do verify those through the grading plans. They need to show the trees are still there when they come in with public construction and grading plans. They have to note on the site that they need to be protected and that fencing's supposed to be around them. And then, when they go to build the streets and then eventually the houses, we again look for the trees to be there. And actually, building inspectors verify that the trees are there. First, we make sure they're on the plan for the individual building house and then when they are inspecting the foundations, they make sure the trees are still there. So, we very rarely for that process need an arborist because, again, it's not about the health of a tree. It's either there or it's not, was already supposed to be protected or not be protected. We are complaint-driven process for all other trees that are cut outside of that kind of development process. And we do rely heavily on public works staff to help us determine what species of tree was cut. For example, if we get a complaint, if the tree was healthy, that kind of thing. And I'm not sure I can speak about the, you know, how effective it would be to have an arborist on staff, planning used to have natural resource staff, maybe 20 years ago, but we don't anymore. So, maybe somebody else would like to talk about that?
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I, at least for me, the one thing that's missing in the public testimony and also in staff's response is no mention of the requirement a developer has to plant trees.
Yes.
In a, in an area that trees have been taken away. Can you speak to that?
Yes. We do have replanning requirements through tree conservation plans. We have a table, depending on the lot size, how many trees you have to have. So, if, for example, your lot had no trees when the building goes in, when the house goes in, you have to plant anywhere from three to six trees. Or if there were already some on the lot, those count and then you make up the difference. And then, of course, street trees are required as well. The builders provide those. If you're removing a certain amount of trees, we require extra tree planting on top of that.
Okay. Counselor Kizer?
Thank you. I also had a question about 6P- I also had a question about 6.5 in terms of the traffic impact analysis, and I know that there wasn't sufficient traffic volumes to generate one of these or require one of these. My question is more about, is there anything in code that takes into consideration the cumulative impacts of traffic in an area? Because we've seen a few subdivisions come forth over the last six months where a specific subdivision doesn't generate enough traffic to warrant traffic impact analysis, but that over time, there's going to be traffic there, and it's going to affect, and are we addressing that at all through our code? And I guess, Director Fernandez?
Counselor Kizer, the answer, you're absolutely correct, and the answer is no. There is no cumulative effect, because if things are, if a property is properly zoned, so for these little subdivisions, as long as they are accessing out to a collector or arterial, then you have to generate 1,000 trips per day, so, you know, 100 homes or more, in essence, 90, 900 homes or more. But what we have in this community is all very small subdivisions. We don't do large subdivisions in Salem, so right, what we end up with is cumulative effects and no way to address the issue short of, at some point, the community then through a bond issue or through SDCs pays for an improvement to a collector or an arterial, as long as it's on the list.
Could I also have the city attorney speak to that? I think it's, there's a mix of issues here.
If I understood Counselor Kizer's comment, it wouldn't necessarily be fair or legal to make a specific developer mitigate the effects of, cumulative effect of traffic that's being generated by other developments, sort of a takings issue there. So they have to, in certain circumstances, they have to mitigate the effects of their own traffic that they're adding to the system, but what's already there is kind of beyond their control.
Yeah, and if I can respond, I completely understand, and I wouldn't want to saddle a developer with having to solve a neighborhood issue either, but just wondering, and I think I kind of already knew that answer, but there is no mechanism really to handle those cumulative effects over time of infill and additional traffic, and, you know, that might be something to explore as a council later on.
Yeah. Counselor Cook?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions, Director Fernandez. So the 1,000 trips, those are vehicular trips. We're not measuring pedestrian trips at all?
No, although in conversations that we've had related to the pedestrian safety study, conversations that you and I have had, we are seriously considering adding some kind of alternative mode component to the transportation, to turning the traffic impact analysis into transportation impact analysis. So we're just in the early throes of how do we do that? And then in that case, perhaps all subdivisions would have some review for that kind of pedestrian connectivity, bicycle connectivity, connectivity to transit, et cetera.
And in regards to this particular development, sorry, I have a hard time. Counselor Lewis, would you mind scooting back just a sec? I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you when you're talking to other counselors. Will you speak up?
Thank you, I'm sorry. I can't see through Counselor Lewis's head, so I asked him to move.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
Keep it public, because people want to know that's happening to you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lewis. So I was wondering, Director Fernandez, if you could speak to the improvements on the Vista Commercial Corridor, what's currently funded in the STIP, what has been approved and is not funded at this time? And then one last brief question, Mr. Mayor, about the topography on Salem Heights and various options. I know Counselor Kizer had talked about speed and influence before, as did Counselor Anderson as it relates to pedestrian safety. Salem Heights is a big hill with lots of trees and access as far as right-of-way, so if you could please do that. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so very, as briefly as I can, the commercial Vista study was completed and brought to council recently. That looks to bicycle and pedestrian mobility in a corridor that's roughly Commercial Street from about Vista Avenue down to Madrona, and then includes some of the side streets. There are, we are seeking some funding through our regional partners at Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Study to fund some of the improvements proposed there. Those improvements are mostly on Commercial Street and not on the side streets as an early phase, so that's the part of that, and I think that's consistent with, you know, my transportation manager, Julie Warnicki, has the exacting detail on that. With respect to Salem Heights, Salem Heights, along with several of the other east-west collectors in Ward Seven, are all lacking sidewalks. They were all roads that the city annexed in the '40s, so that whole area was mostly developed in the county, under county standards before they were developed. Those streets, particularly Salem Heights, is a street that has significant topographic issues, not just as it goes uphill, but on its sides as well, making it extremely difficult to add curbs and sidewalks. Nevertheless, we recognize that those are issues not just on Salem Heights, on Rubitz and Browning. I mean, there are several others. So they really await the next bond issue because of the expense and the difficulty of building them. I think the community is at a point where we've done a lot of arterial work, so that collectors such as these are probably next in line to be able to do something, but it would await the community, when we go up to the community to talk about the next projects, and the council ultimately in deciding, you know, which projects are going to go in. But we would certainly be, we staff would be supportive of adding at least one, if not more, of those streets in Ward Seven, because they are, we certainly recognize the need.
So you're talking about the next bond measure?
The next bond measure, right, right. As we start to put those together.
It's not just talking to the public, we're going to ask them to tax themselves to pay for this.
Ultimately, right, but, you know, there's a process early on. I think what has made the bond issues successful is that we have engaged the community to help us put the project list together.
Is there a way for Counselor Cook then to work with her folks, to get them to the table in this discussion as well?
We already know, I mean, Counselor Cook and I have visited a number of times. Former Counselor Bernard and I have visited a number of times. Frankly, every former counselor from Ward Seven and I have met over the last 10, 15 years, talking about these streets. It's a well-known, well-known issue.
Okay, okay. So we got them all over town.
We got them all over town.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I think this is for Director Wright. I think that I saw in one of those conditions that the sidewalk on the north side of Salem Heights is going to have to be put in as part of the condition, so at least for getting a start there.
Right, I'm sorry, I'll grab it, no, thank you. Right, so for the frontage improvement.
That's a start, then.
It's absolutely a start.
We've got something there.
It's just to be able to get to somewhere.
And in fact, to what the mayor and Counselor Cook and you were speaking to, having that in there as a project that says, "Hey, this is a lot nicer to walk on Salem Heights here," is going to encourage the public to say, "Let's do it all of Salem Heights." So I think that's a good start, and I'm glad that's one of the conditions that's for that development.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Have you got one of these, too?
No, actually, just going to growth-related, we still are not charging the full extent of what we could for a transportation SDC, correct?
That is correct, and that is one of the topics.
Because we don't have matching funds from our side to actually complete the project, and otherwise we'd just be collecting tons of cash and make people very angry at us.
That is correct.
Okay, but in the same vein, if we were issuing the entirety of that, it does affect affordable housing in the city as well, so I'm looking to see what'll come out of, because developers will be having to pay, if it were to the point where we could fund it from the city's side, the SDCs that are required when you build a home would be increased.
Correct.
So.
One of the many things that I've, one of the many things that I've learned on the SDC committee is that SDCs are waived for affordable housing in order to encourage it, so that's a good thing.
But if it's raising the overall home price in the city, that's not specifically to an affordable housing project, it's just relating to affordability as a community.
Counselor Nanki, you will be pleased to know that that view has been represented on the SDC committee.
Excellent, great. Well, good. Well, we're a long way from Dogwood. Let's, let's move back home here, and any further questions on any of these issues? Okay? Let's go to second reading of ordinances then.
Ordinance Bill Number 2917, an ordinance relating to providing for a property tax exemption for certain low-income housing nonprofit owners, creating new provisions and declaring an emergency. Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kizer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor McCoy?
Aye.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Ordinance passes, very good. That's all I have. I do have time if anyone else wants to get up and comment. Michael, come on, man.
George, I don't...
Okay, we are then adjourned. Thank you.